Okay, we'd like to call the all of the March 10th meeting of the Upson County Planning Commission. We're gonna start off with the roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Chairman Fallon?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rush?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
We have Coram Chairman Fallon.
Thank you. I'm gonna start off, the next thing is the adoption of the meeting minutes from the last time. We had some corrections also from the fire meeting. Does everybody approve of the corrections and the...
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
A second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The unanimous, thank you.
Yeah. All right, next. One change I might want to make. Do we have any representatives here from the Pattersons? Okay, that's fine. Just want to make sure we didn't hold them up if we had. So, we're gonna go to item number three, Old Business, which is application for rezoning, REZ 202501, Ten Acres Lake LLC, Old Alabama Road and Williams Road of 266.36 acres, the parcels of 016, 020, 21, 21A, 21B, 31A, from AR to PM, for 124 lot residential subdivision, light commercial, clubhouse, storage units, and RV parking. We're continuing this hearing from last week, from last month. Normally, we start off here with the having the Serenity to Lake people bring, come present themselves. But right now, what I want to start off with is, since the last meeting, Commissioner Rush and I had some conversations with the Serenity to Lake people based on some things that we saw and that we wanted some questions answered on. Where all of us had an opportunity to bring up questions and give them a little bit of time to resolve some of them. They have replied back to us with some of these questions, but not with answers. So, we are definitely, you know, have a lot of things that need to be answered here. So, the Serenity to Lake group would like to start off with an opening presentation of any kind?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the county planning committee again for being here.
Your name and address, please.
Here, Dan Sprangetti, 975 West American Drive, Union, Wisconsin. So, again, I want to thank you all for being here again today. A little bit, bring back the vision of the property that we're talking about. It truly is a property of splendor. It's a one-of-a-kind destination. For any of you that have toured that land or maybe grew up in the area and know the land, it is truly, truly a one-of-a-kind destination. And we don't want to waste that. We want to definitely capitalize on that. And, you know, if you don't know what it's about, it's a property that has water, it's wooded, the topography is amazing. There's all kinds of rolling hills and, you know, looks like little mountains and things like that, or we call it a beaut. We feel it's an amazing opportunity to build something that is, that everybody will talk about. We truly are looking at this like it's a destination area like some of the other destinations in Georgia or in Florida and some of those that kind of stand on their own. And that's really what we saw, and that was the vision we had for it. We're looking at doing some of the finest homes and craftsmanship to a truly custom level. We were excited about traditional families. We're kind of excited about the fishing and the hiking trails and the kayaking. And that's, that's all gonna take place there. The ponds and the, the rolling hills and how our homes fit into the landscape where they, they don't stand out, but they really look well in that environment. We're gonna have a clubhouse with amenities. It'll have a workout facility. We have availability to do events for our residents, an in-ground pool, an outdoor living area. And it's basically a lifestyle. And that's, that's exactly what we're trying to build. It's a lifestyle. We're looking for those type of clients that want to enjoy that and also enjoy the slower pace of this area. And a lot of you have grown up here and, you know, we, we think this is just a great opportunity for people to recharge and, and enjoy maybe some of the slower-paced things of, you know, Thomaston. We're gonna have a water tower at the entrance. I didn't know when I, when I realized we were gonna do a water tower, I didn't realize you had a water tower here. And that's kind of your symbol here, so that, I think that was kind of fun. But we're gonna have one of those at the entrance. I'm gonna talk about some opportunities. I think opportunity-wise for the county, it's a great tax base for the county. If you take a lower average of the 124 homes we're gonna be building, it should generate about $1 million per year in tax revenue. Now, that's a little subjective, obviously, but I think I took an average that I thought was fair. And I'm sure the county can use that for the schools and other programs and things like that. We're excited to use some of the subcontractors in the area and the quality builders. Currently, we've already hired soil testing companies locally, engineering firms, rental companies, and logging company. We've already started, you know, spend money here with other individuals and things like that. Generally, what we do is we vet all of our companies on merit and service basis only. We must have the highest quality and we can't be average. We must set the standard. And that's very important to us, that we really stand out and set a standard. So, if someone happens to share the same zip code that we do, it doesn't mean you get a free pass to be a contractor for us. But it gives you an opportunity to talk to us and show us what you can do. And during the vetting process, we'll, we'll see if you're up to the task, and we hope you are. We can't do this subdivision without quality subcontractors, that's for sure. And that's important. We can see, we see Upson County as a strategic partner, actually, in this process. We are collaborative in our own design and our development. As the chairman's already said, we've had some conversations since the last meeting, and I believe they've been very productive. In development, the math has to work. Infrastructure, timing, marketing, sales, et cetera, we must bring the vision to pass. But all those things matter. And I think the committee understands that the math has to work. And, because obviously with the infrastructure costs and things like that, we want it to be successful. This committee has a challenging job. To balance the citizens' concerns and the future of the county for the growth, we have to trust each other. I, I know I'm the outsider, but the fact of the matter is, I have to trust the committee too.
You got about 30 seconds.
No, actually, I was told I couldn't speak longer.
We'll give you a few more minutes to carry on, but we're not gonna go over about eight minutes.
Okay. Well, some concerns from the last meeting was the traffic count, so I'll address that. We had a traffic count taken during the peak hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00. It came out to about 26 vehicles, and that would be about one vehicle every five minutes. So, I know that was important to somebody, so I wanted to address that. The wells, the wells were a very hot topic here. And so, we hired a hydrologist because we think it's important to find out the science instead of opinions and accusations. And it's a very reputable company. It's been doing it for 51 years. And we were able to find out some positive results. We feel we can work through the water concerns with the committee here. Tying into the county water source is one idea. A community well system is another idea that we're open to and/or some type of individual wells as well. We did find out from the hydrologist that even if we did individual wells, it would not affect any of our neighbors' water tables and/or their wells. And we have it in writing, and we'll be happy to share that with you at a later date. Winter Garden, Florida is a great example of a, of a city that was dead because the citrus industry went out in the 80s. And someone had a bright idea, so let's put a bike trail through where the railroad tracks used to be. And I know a lot of people thought that guy was crazy. And by the 90s into the 2000s, about half the storefronts were open and closed. And it was a very, very poor area. And as it started to gain traction, we saw more and more of the storefronts open up and more and more. And now it's become a huge tourist area. And the downtown, you can't even get a storefront if you wanted to. And the good news is, it's affected both, both Oakland and Ocoee on both sides of that because they were kind of the forerunner. And I feel like we're that forerunner in this area to build something that's really special, that, that can go out further with other developments and other people that have that same vision. I think, at the end of the day, ask yourself this. If your children go to college, do they come back to this area? Or do they go somewhere else where there's more opportunity? And I think this is really all about the next generation and the generation after that. Because myself, I'm a grandfather and I care about my children and my grandchildren. And I think most of you here, grown up here, believe the same thing. So, I believe that, ask yourself, do they stay or do they go somewhere where they feel there's a better opportunity? And we had a waitress yesterday while we were eating dinner, and she looked at the dessert, which was a brownie with ice cream on it. And she says, "I make these cookies like this all the time." And we were trying to encourage her because she was a single mom and she's 22 years old. And I said, "Well, why don't you sell those then?" And she looked at me and she says, "Well, not in Thomaston. It'd never work here." And I just thought, that's unfortunate. She's 22, she's waitressing, and she's got kind of a neat idea. And I think that's, if we can change the attitude, you know, Kirby, who coaches Georgia football, he had to come in and change something. And all of a sudden, you guys become national champions and knock off the big dog in Alabama, and you, and you guys have been successful ever since. So, we'll answer all your questions as best we can. And I always say to the group, what is our legacy gonna be? That's why I'm here. I'm here because I want to make a difference. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, continuing with the forwards, we've got Jim Faulkner. Were you planning on speaking?
Yep.
I remember, state your name and address and your limit to five minutes.
I'm Jim Faulkner, 600 Holly Street, Thomaston, Georgia. And I represent the owner group here this afternoon. And we appreciate you hearing us. Want to give you a little bit of my background, if I may, so that you can understand some of my comments a little bit later. I'm originally from Michigan. I grew up in a Christian family. Like, my parents owned a Christian bookstore. And I worked there from age 10 until age 27, at which time I became a remodeler, a high-end custom remodeler, owned a kitchen and bath shop, and worked for people like Mrs. Carhart, who was the founder, her husband was the founder of Carhart Work Clothing. When I was a remodeler, the company that I owned became one of the top 50 remodeling companies in the United States because of the quality and the care, customer care. I was then recruited by Habitat for Humanity to join them and worked for Habitat for Humanity for 10 years. Somebody mentioned at the last meeting, President Jimmy Carter. I went with Jimmy Carter to the Philippines in 1997, where we built 293 Habitat for Humanity homes in five days. I've been down here in Thomaston in the ministry for the past 18 years. My wife and I are both pastors. And we currently run a company called Fresh Start Works, which is a marriage coaching, marriage enrichment company. And we're continuing to work that along with the Serenity to Lake. And then someone also mentioned that we own Ameritech's dumpsters. And they thought that was a brilliant idea because dumpsters are gonna be needed on that property, and we agree. So, I mention all of that because my wife and I are also hikers. We have hiked 540 miles of the Appalachian Trail, starting in Springer Mountain, Georgia, up into Virginia currently. And of course, when we saw that property out there after coming back from Spurrow Bluff on one of our hikes, we know the trails of Spurrow Bluff like the back of our hands. We've hiked them hundreds of times. We saw the for sale sign. We checked into it. We knew of a couple other families that wanted property in Upson County as well. We contacted them. We formed an LLC. We looked at the property. But before we bought it, we came to the county and we said, "We don't, as three individual owners, we don't necessarily want all this land. Could we develop it into a subdivision?" And we were assured that we could, based even on the existing zoning. So, having learned that and then doing due diligence for the next 30 days, we determined that we were gonna go ahead and buy it. And the faith and trust that we were gonna be able to build a subdivision here in Upson County that we would all be proud of and that would benefit the entire county. So, we purchased the land and we began to do all kinds of testing with engineers, wetland delineation, topography. We've spent well over $100,000 just in engineering costs preparing for today. So, our heart is to cooperate with the county in every respect. One of the things that Doug told us from the very beginning is that he wanted us to be on the same, same side of the table, was the term that he used. And that's our intention from the very beginning, to always be on the same side of the table as all of you and to work with you. Now, we're here asking for rezoning because that's what you told us to do. You said if we were gonna build this fantastic subdivision, we needed to rezone it. So, that's why we're here, because we're obeying what you asked us to do. The ownership group, along with our developer, Dan Sprangetti, wants to build the finest subdivision in Upson County. And if we can collaborate and work on this together, we know that we can do it together. And I just want to close by having us all think about what this subdivision's gonna mean to Upson County. As a builder, former builder, I know that local contractors, masons, framers, HVAC contractors, electricians, plumbers, insulators, roofers, drywallers, and carpenters are gonna be all get paid to build these 124 homes. We're gonna be buying these materials from local suppliers. I estimate that over $100 million will be spent building these homes here locally. That's gonna be quite a boost to our local economy. And in addition to that, I know from my development and Habitat for Humanity, community development, that money goes around seven times. So, that's $700 million for our community.
You've got your time, sir. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your... Okay, next, and forward, we've got Daniel White.
Yes, sir. Daniel White. My address is 7780 Newton Road in Brooks, Georgia. I've been approached by the owners to consider helping them in the building process. I've done custom homes for 35 years. I'm from California. We moved here to Georgia 13, 12, 13 years ago. Enjoy Georgia very much. And we live in Brooks in Spaulding County right now. But we come down to Thomaston weekly. We're a part of Hope of the Generations Church. And so, we've really gotten to know the Thomaston area quite well. And we love it. We love Thomaston. But I think the, what we're seeing is it's an opportunity for the community to increase in its economic status. And we understand that there's some areas of, of the community that needs to be encouraged economically. And, and we'd like to be a part of helping that out. And so, I just wanted to introduce myself. I don't know if the agreement will come that we actually will be out there. But I know we've been approached and we're being vetted to be a part of the potential building project down there. And one thing that I was encouraged when I was reading what the PM zoning had to do was to increase the development. Is it proper for me to read something off the phone? If I can just mention what PM does, but it says it encourages the development of large tracts of land as planned neighborhoods or communities. Number two, it encourages flexible and creative concepts in site planning. Number three, it preserves the natural amenities of the land by encouraging scenic and functional open areas within residential areas. Number four, it creates a more desirable environment than would be possible through the strict application of minimum requirements of other sections of the ordinance. Five, provides for efficient use of land resulting in smaller networks of utilities and streets as well as lower development and housing costs. And number six, provides an environment of stable character which is compatible with surrounding residential areas. And I think that's really what is being desired in the, in the spirit of what's being encouraged in this request for zoning change and in the development. I'd just like to see Thomaston have the opportunity to raise its economic opportunities and statuses. It kind of has already been shared, so just want to share that with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Doug Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Doug Peck. I live at 250-year-old's Road and buy property. And my home backs right up within 100 feet of the proposed development. We've been here since 2007. We've owned our home and property. And this is our town. We love this town. We are, our church is here. Hope of the Generations is where I attend. And we just love our area. We love our county. And from what I see from the plans of this development, I think it's an amazing thing. And I'm right next to it. And I think it's going to increase the value of my home. And I know that my wife, I went to be with the Lord about two and a half years ago. But this is my home. And this is my county. And my daughter and my granddaughter now live with me. And so, we're looking at the next two generations. We love this area also. I think, I think this looks like a beautiful development. I wish it was available when we first came and looked for homes and wholeheartedly support. I think it's wonderful, especially as I think of the businesses of our community that need this boost, millions of dollars of additional income for them. And I'm very excited for them and for the possibility of the county. I don't know of anything else that even compares with what they're planning. And so, I'm very excited about it. And I hope that, that you give your support.
Thank you. Okay, next, we've got Laura Boatright.
I'm Laura Boatright. I live at 632 Daniel Road in Thomaston. I'm coming representing that I agree with this project. And some of the reasons that I agree with it is that, first of all, I know quite a few people on the team and the owners. And I've known them for some time, quite a while. And my, they are people of integrity. They are people of honor. They've lived here a long time and have benefited Thomaston in many ways beyond what we even know. There have been, and I don't know all of them, but I know that they have a good heart. I know that they are loyal. And I also know that people here have a good heart. And they want, sorry, they want the benefit of Thomaston. They want Thomaston to actually reflect what it can't be. One of the ideas or the thoughts that I've had has been, it appears, it seems like similar to a new mom having a baby. Don't know what to expect. Not sure where the finances are gonna come from. Not sure if I'm gonna make it to the hospital. Not sure, all these what-if elements. But the reality is, is you can't shove a baby back up in. And if you ever asked a mom to do that, you would be the last person standing. Because when it's time for new birth and new growth, it's time. And I have seen that. Our families trans, we moved here. We, what's that word?
Transplant.
We transplanted here over eight years ago. It was a hard transition. We came from Phoenix. We were used to highway interstate. And we had to learn really quickly, but we had to slow down. And there was actually a lot of benefit in our family for slowing down. We needed to slow down. We needed to reconnect with our family. We needed to reconnect with, my husband and I communicating together. There was just a lot of benefit from moving here. And I love Thomaston now. When I go on the highway in Atlanta, I don't like it. I feel like there have been a few things, and I'm gonna take a look at this at a different angle, not necessarily from the actual factual elements of this. But what I do want to say is that I feel like some things have gotten added in. And no one likes change. Not no one. There are people who thrive on change, but as a general rule, people don't like change. It's hard because we don't know what to expect, just like a new baby. We don't know what to expect. We can guess. We can try. We can do our best effort to try to prepare for it. But the reality is, is things change. Life is changing. I refused to get a cellphone for most of my life. And then, when BlackBerry no longer existed, I was heartbroken because I loved that phone. But life, it could not keep up with the elements of social media, not even that, just the maps alone helped me. But my phone could not attain to that. Like, I had to change. I know there are elements that people here, they have good input. They have very valid questions. And I think that those questions can be properly addressed without all of the inflammation that has happened specifically through social media. I feel like there's been a lot, I believe there's been a lot of conjecture, things that, people's conversations and input that are not reality. They are not based on fact. They are, they are opinions and conclusions that really have caused trouble. It's not been a place of have, come together and having a conversation, "How does this benefit Thomaston? How does new life here look?" And...
30 seconds.
I believe that there is, that there is a place where, to some degree, when the mills closed, life shut down here. And I wasn't here for that time, but I've had, I've heard, I've seen. And I think for some time, you just need a defibrillator. Not fun, not comfortable, painful, but it brings life back in. And at some point, we've gotta do that.
Thank you for your statement. Okay, let's see. Is this Dan? Were you on here again? Is that, is that Dan? I can't, SPR?
It, it was.
Okay, so you had yours. Okay. All right, we're moving to Anthony Slaughter.
I'm Anthony Slaughter with Mead Meads Associates. We represent engineer for record on this subdivision. We have just got started. Most of, I think this can be a great opportunity for the county to have a good tax base, infrastructure and all that in the community. So, hopefully we've asked, answered all the questions y'all have asked us, hopefully. So, it's up to y'all to make the determination of, you wanna rezone this or we're gonna just go with the existing zoning that we have and move forward. So, thank y'all very much.
Okay, Aldra Faulkner.
Aldra Faulkner, 600 Holly Street, Thomaston, Georgia. This property was listed for sale in the spring of 2023. I don't know how many people drive up and down Old Alabama Road and had the opportunity to purchase that property, but we saw the for sale sign and we saw the opportunity. Mike McDaniels was the realtor, precious gentleman from the Woodbury area, helped us solidify the purchase. Then, we saw the opportunity to purchase an additional 72 acres next door that Mr. Nick Peterson was ready to sell. He was 84 years old and not using it any longer. Then, we had the opportunity to purchase another 12 acres from Freddie Vaughn off of Williams Road to make a better access point to the back 100 acres of this property that borders a timber company and the wildlife management area. So, we made the offer. So we made the offer June 15th and had 30 days to do our due diligence to find out if we could put a subdivision on this land. We started out with our good friend Doug Courier, who instructed us on some things we even need to do and said, as long as you keep us informed throughout the process, we're going to get along great. And that is exactly what we have done. We have asked questions all along. We had some ideas in the beginning and the more that we learned about what was possible, the, the vision changed up, okay? Our goal is to have a beautiful subdivision that promotes families and people getting outside. There will be hiking, there will be mountain biking, there will be kayaking, canoeing, fishing. I currently hold the record for the biggest fish in the lake. It was a very fun day. We are going to live here. We have always desired to build our own home. Jim's done many reviving projects, as he stated, but we've not been able to build our own home from the ground up. We're ecstatic about the opportunity to do that in such a beautiful location. Our family is here. Our youngest daughter graduated from Upson Lee High School, was in the marching band. We have nine, 10 counting our grandson's wife, 10 grandchildren in this community. This is home. This is where we shop. I go to Ingles, I go to Walmart, I go to Piggly Wiggly, I go to Serendipity. I get my nails done here in this town, okay? Our money is here. We don't travel outside of Thomaston. We eat here. We could probably tell you almost every restaurant around because we've tried them all, okay? Riverbend has a great view. This is not something we're doing to just make a buck and leave. This is going to be our home. We have gone through this process. We have asked for expertise, wisdom. We consulted with those who would do roads, electrical, internet, water. We have those answers. And it will be time for us to sit down with this planning committee to make a decision on what will work best for this community, for this ownership group. We want to do this with you because we have, we can see it. We want it to be a beautiful place. The retail, I would really like to set the retail question to rest. We will never open a Dollar General in the Serenity Lake subdivision. The retail is going to be a small restaurant-type scenario in the clubhouse. If you've ever been to a gated community that has an in-ground pool and other amenities, it's quite nice to be able to go to the snack shop to get something while the kids are swimming in the pool. That's the reason, one of the reasons we had to go PM. There's people that need to store their boat or their RV. We would rather not have 50-foot RV garages or barns on the properties. So we have offered to take some of the property and put a nice berm around it so that it is hidden, so that people who have an RV or a boat can park there so that it's not out in the community in the open. So we want to answer all of your questions and we want to work with you to make this a beautiful subdivision in our county, which is beautiful. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was all that we had to speak for. Next, we move on to the commissioners' options to question the Serenity Group with any questions we might want to bring up at this time. I know we presented some questions. Steve and Jacqueline and I have presented some. Marty, Jeff, do y'all have some questions you'd like to present to them, give them the opportunity to respond to?
Where are we at with the water?
We've got to go up there.
So with the water, we're definitely open-minded to working with the county and bringing the water out. We're also looking at community wells. We've gotten information from the professionals on both. I understand that, to me, it sounds like after having communication with some of the people locally, that the water issue is linked to, could be linked to how many lots that we have. And so we'd be willing to entertain a shared cost to do that. Definitely would be very open to that. And I would say that, I'm not, I know you have a commission and I think that if we can move this forward today on the rezoning, that we would take that up with them and work out those details of what that might look like. Because I think, you know, you've got a, you've got a county manager we have to get involved in. We have to look at, how does it compare to doing community wells? How are you as a committee and them as commissioners going to feel about that? After the research we had done, it sounds like if we can do the community wells, you get the same benefit as you would if you bring it from the county. I understand that it's a, water's money. So for the county, that's a revenue source. So my position on is this, I don't think it's fair for Serenity Lakes to pay for it to come all the way out because you're obviously going to have a lot of other subdivisions and people that have the opportunity to tie in between where we are and the main. I haven't had anybody tell me exactly what the total distance is. I've been told it could be a mile and three-quarters. We did obtain a bid from, I think, a quality contractor here. That was a referral. I really liked him. I think he's an honest businessman. But it's a significant number. It's very significant. And for us, like I said earlier, the math has to work. The math doesn't work, it doesn't work for anybody. And so we are definitely open to participating financially in making it happen, but we simply can't do the whole thing.
Have you sat down and actually had a conversation with someone from the county water department?
I have not.
Why is that?
Just haven't.
Don't you think that's kind of important?
Think it's very important.
I do too.
I do. I absolutely do.
That's all I have, right there.
We can speak to the, the question if you'd like.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I contacted my son-in-law, who knows a gentleman that works at the county water department, to find out what would be the cost to run the water line from where it currently ends at Turkey Creek Snacks down Thurston School Road to Old Alabama. And while on the phone, speakerphone, we were told that he was already working on those numbers. He didn't give us a number at that time, but he told us over the phone, because he was asked, was that something that the county would split with the ownership group? And the gentleman said, oh yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he's someone who was working on that pricing, I would assume, because someone here had asked that question. So what we have done is we have first contacted a hydrologist, geologist, who came out last Friday and did his work on the land. We can do wells, according to his report, okay? He also stated.
Let me stop you right there for a minute. I hit a plumber company for 34 years. I know about wells, I know how to go dry, okay? So carry on.
Yes, sir. I grew up in the country in Michigan, so I understand that reality as well. So his next statement was, based on his findings, two community wells would serve the entire subdivision. One would be the main and the other would be a backup. In his findings, that would work. So that's a second option. Third would be to run the county water. And with what we've been told thus far, it's looking to be about 1.25 million to run from Turkey Creek to the entrance of our subdivision. And then it has to be run inside of the subdivision. And that's why Mr. Springetti is explaining that the math has to work in order for us to be able to do this. So that's why we want to work with the county, because it was the county that presented to us the idea of bringing in county water. That was not something we even had on the table because we knew it was not out there. So that is why we went with the route of wells. And now there's the community well option that could be considered. So that's the current information that we have from those that we have checked with regarding the water.
So this person you spoke to worked with Upson County Water Department?
Yes, sir.
But you don't remember his name?
Correct. I can find that out if you want me to.
Well, it would have been a good option to have somebody from the water department from Upson County here.
Should that have been us that invited that person to come? Because Mr. Springetti has had conversations with other members of the committee and that was not recommended to us. Otherwise, we would have done that.
Well, you know, when you're doing research, you tend to want to gather as much information as you can and shift through what you got. Bring in everything you got.
Which we have tried to do and there's always more.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any contact with the health department?
Not yet.
And discussed anything with them?
Not yet.
So there's a lot of conversation surrounding water and that is the biggest issue, as far as I'm aware. It's not necessarily just water, it's the conflict between septic systems.
I understand that.
And the lot size. It's an equation. And the proximity to your neighbor and your neighbor's wells and so forth and so on. I, I think that would be a good conversation to have.
Be happy to have that.
Also, power. Have you, have you talked about power?
Yes, we had Upson EMC come out when we were doing our due diligence in 2023. And they gave us an estimate of $17 per foot to run underground electrical. And we will also run underground internet with high-line.
It's my understanding that there might be a question as to whether there's enough service there to service the community, especially at the density at which you are now.
They didn't, at that time, they didn't believe it would be a problem.
In addition, the clubhouse or community center, have you given consideration, you will be required to sprinkle that building? It's 10,000.
Fire protection.
Fire protection?
We will build the building to all the codes that it requires.
But on wells, you won't have the water service to serve the sprinkler system. You would have to install a tank. The state fire marshal would have to get involved and you'd have to install a water reserve tank that would operate that sprinkler system.
So Thurston School Fire Department came for an onsite visit and I invited Richard to come tonight, but I don't see him here. Are you here, Richard, there? Thought maybe that was you. So Richard could speak to that because we did talk.
I know Richard, I appreciate him being here, but this is a state-level discussion. He would be involved at some level, but the state fire marshal would weigh in on that and dictate what requirements you have. And I know for sure that a well would be not acceptable service fire protection system. You would have to install a self-contained system, which would also include the tanks and the amount of water required for that building. Though these discussions haven't been had either, so.
Not that one specific, no. We've been told that some of these questions are not for this stage of the process.
No, we are tasked with making recommendations of the county commissioners about the whole of this project. And in order for us to do that, we need to understand how you're approaching these things.
Understand.
Exactly.
One of the questions that I had was going to be, if you went with the community wells, how would that service fire hydrants for this number of housing? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, if you go to our fire.
Pardon me?
Where's our fire?
If it were wells, we've had discussions about dry hydrants, which is something we're capable of full of water from.
From the lake?
From the lake. It's not ideal, but.
Could everybody hear that?
It'd be beneficial.
Well, with the proposed one acre in the density and what I saw recently, the side setbacks of the homes, fire is a big problem. So you've got neighbors less than 20 feet from each other in the proposal that I'm looking at. So I don't know how you handle that.
We'll have to get those answers for you.
Understood. I don't have a suggestion and I'm not suggesting how you handle that. What I'm saying is, these are all things we need to understand because if the PM zoning does allow the density.
I can give you an answer to the, to the distance on the property line, it's 10 feet.
I understand that.
It's 10 feet on the property.
Which means 20 feet between homes.
That's right. From the property line, 10 feet from the property line, 20 feet from homes.
Yep.
Which, not in saying I support or, or against either one, they have the setbacks that take care of this.
Yes, sir. And I'm relating that back to fire protection as well.
Yeah.
Proximity of your homes.
Any other questions?
I think basically where we're at here is, we're looking at this from the standpoint of the PM zoning, okay? That's the first thing we've got to address. You know, if we were to step up and say, okay, we agree with the PM zoning, y'all haven't answered enough questions for us really even to get that far. We presented y'all with a lot of questions. The answers are very vague to them, in my opinion. The water thing, I think the two biggest sticklers we have at this point is going to be the water and the lot size. You know, as they brought up the cases, the situation with fire protection, that we would, that you need to be sure that you're prepared for. And, you know, I mean, from my standpoint, county water is a, is a deal breaker. You either do it or you don't. There's no, to me, there's no option. You fully want, you know, take on the responsibility of putting the county water there. Now, if you have an agreement with the county outside of us, that's, that's outside of you. But to be able to offer the fire protection and to be able to offer the, you know, what you need for this, this area, I think the county water is, is a definitive thing that has to be done. And then, you know, I don't think any of us are going to agree to a lot size of one acre. I think that, I mean, if I'm speaking out of line, y'all let me know, but I think a two, three acre lot size is, is, you know, where we're going to be hard, two acre, for sure, two acres what they are allowed for prior to.
I think the health department's going to support the two acre discussion.
So I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of other things that were brought into the question that we brought, you know, that sent to y'all, that are kind of vague and ambiguous answers. But I think one of the first things, you know, we need to know is, are y'all prepared to run this water? Are y'all prepared to do the water and the lot size before we really go any further with the other things that we have?
Dan, can you speak to that?
Well, I think I'd like to state that we want to have a shared relationship financially with the county. And this did, this.
And that is between y'all and the county and not y'all and us.
I understand that.
And that's something that.
Just to be transparent here, this just came up and we've addressed it and we're trying to do our due diligence. I felt it was important to have a hydrologist come out so we really know what's going on because this gentleman, Jeffrey, said about being a plumber and that wells can go dry. So let's just say hypothetically, you said, oh, you can have all the wells. We still need to know in good faith, what do we have under the ground? What do we have for volume? So we found that out and I can't put the cart in front of the horse. Believe me, I wish I could have the guy from the water department here, but the fact is, we just got the report, what is today, Monday, last night? Man's wife is sick, just got back from the hospital. I'm sure he's in his 80s. You know, you've got to have, you know, a little compassion here, but I'm, we are fully in agreement that we can bring the water out and can solve a lot of these issues. I agree with you. But I'm saying, I know you don't have the, I don't believe you have the authority to say, oh yes, the county's going to participate in this in some level financially. Am I right?
No, you don't have the authority to speak for them, right.
So I understand that. So I understand that.
That's your position to take that up.
Exactly.
To report to us what you can, will or won't do in that situation.
So we're willing to definitely take on some of the responsibility, for sure, financially. I can tell you that. But what I don't know is what the county's willing to come up, you know, in all fairness, right? So I can't give you a number, but we're definitely willing to play ball and make this happen, because we understand that there's a trickle-down effect. If we don't have the water come from the county, we're not going to get the density that we need. If we don't get the density we need, the project isn't going to happen. And I know that some of the people here might like hearing that. That's fine. But the reality of it is, the math has to work. And for the business people in this room, you at least understand that I'm being transparent and saying, we're not looking for an excuse for it not to work. We're trying to say, what's the county going to do? I mean.
Well, like we spoke, when we spoke on the phone, you know, a well, you'd say is 8,000, I think you're closer to 10,000 per well. At 124, that's 1.24. And that's not guaranteed water on those wells that you're talking about, 8 and 10,000 dollars for. You know, so whether you can get it or not, so that, you know, when you throw in numbers, they're tit-for-tat here, you know, between county and well.
I don't disagree with that. The difference is who's paying for it upfront. And if the county, if the county's saying they'll pitch in, we just need to know what that is. And I've only had one conversation with the commissioner over the phone regarding that. So we are trying to move forward and get some of those answers, but quite frankly, we have to find out who's in authority, who can make those decisions, what has to happen from here. So my position on it is, it's got to go through the commissioners anyway, the water side of this. Simple as that. So I would like to see us move forward with the zoning change, because the list that you're referring to, most of those items are very little items. You know that. We, you know, the big items are the density and the water. We know that. Plain and simple.
I think in order for you to have an educated conversation with the county, you probably need to have, what does a community water system look like? What does that proposal look like? Because until you have a full view of, until we have a full view, or at least myself has an understanding of what does a community system water look like, and what does the county water system look like?
Sure.
And how do you address these concerns with either system? So county water system's easy to address these concerns, you just mentioned that.
Right.
Makes a lot of this stuff just kind of go away.
Sure does.
But if you are proposing wells in a community water system, then there needs to be more understanding of that. So, I mean, I don't know what you're asking us to approve and move forward right now. For me, I don't know that I know enough to make a recommendation and move it to the board commissioners. I think in a short time, you've brought a lot of information to the table, but I think the two biggest pieces need to be discussed.
But aren't those, the commission has to, respectfully, Steve, the commission has to approve it or deny it anyway, correct?
I think if we moved it forward today, it would be denied.
Okay.
So I think it's worth our time to work through this a little bit more, so we can advise the commissioners on what we believe is the right thing.
Okay.
You guys speak up.
Yeah, we've got to have a lot more answers. And, you know, when we tag this as PM zone, it sticks with it.
I understand that.
And we, you know, before we can approve a PM zoning, we don't, I mean, you've given us some vague ideas of what you want. And when we spoke to you, I asked you to put down specifically what y'all want, when it's related to the water, the lot sizes, and, you know, we came back to you, no, those are not going to work. And, you know, just the retail, the venue, stuff like that, those need to be definitive before we can really answer them. You know, yes, we agree with the PM, no, we don't agree with the PM.
Sure.
And, you know, those have been, you know, they've been bounced around. We've been on both sides of it. We're going to do it, we're not going to do it, we're going to have it, we're not going to have it. You need to put down specifically what your intentions are, and what you're asking us to approve. And then we, then we can negotiate on what we can do and what we can't do. But at this point, we don't have specifics on what you're asking us for.
To my knowledge, and if I'm mistaken, I apologize, but to my knowledge, Philip, when we talked, I gave you the size of the clubhouse.
We got that, yes.
Right? We talked about.
Wish for the public to know that was a 10,000 square foot clubhouse in Pueblo area.
We talked about the specifics on the, how big was the footprint going to be for the storage? We gave you that. We talked about the retail, the separate retail size, that's in there.
With the storage, is it going to be covered, uncovered? Is it going to be open? The type of storage warehouses, what type of storage warehouses? Because it does play into our decision, because it's based on a lot of what these people in the room are going to see, what's going to be around them.
Well, if you looked at it, we told you in our response that we were going to have a berm.
We got a berm, but the actual storage part itself, what's it going to be? That's the questions, that's some of the questions we brought forward. Continue.
Well, to my knowledge, we answered the bulk of the questions that we could answer. And I said earlier today, and I'll say it again, we're willing to work with the county on bringing the water out, that they need to also step up as well. Because it certainly isn't equitable for us to pay for a mile and a quarter if that is the lane.
Well, what do you think the questions the commissioners are going to ask you when you do get a chance to sit down with them? The first question is going to be, what are you asking us for?
I think that question's, are you looking for county? What percent of the county would you like to do it? I mean, I would have a reasonable response to say, hey, county, I'm just going to use Tanya Hudson for an example, because she lives on Old Alabama Road. You know, we're willing to fund a portion of this if the county is, but how do we get reimbursed if Tanya Hudson decides, I'm sorry, Tanya Anderson decides to join the system? If you pay for it initially upfront, you and the county, there's, you know, you're going to want to respond, and we would expect a reimbursement if people, other people decided to join on this in the future. So I just think that's some advice that you would need to be prepared for.
Sure. And to that note, which is a good point, there's other ways too. Maybe you negotiate.
Tap fees.
Right.
With the county. There's lots of ways.
There's lots of pieces to get there.
Yes.
And I don't, I think, at least for myself, I don't know enough, and I'm not the final say-so, the commissioners are, but I certainly would feel better if we knew the specifics, as Philip has mentioned, particularly the water and the lot size, and we can make an educated recommendation to the board commissioner.
I can personally speak, I'm not against your proposal. You know, I just would like to see a lot more information, because once we tag this as PM, we're stuck with it.
I understand that.
And we just want to make sure, because this is, you know, one of the largest projects we've dealt, we want to make sure we get it right the first time.
Yeah, that makes, we're the same.
So, as in the previous meeting, you know, one of the statements that I made is, the concern I have is the one acre lot. I think currently what you have, you're still looking at one acre, some one acre lots.
Some.
Some one acre lots. Can you enlighten me on?
Sure.
Well, I hear what you're saying about the numbers have to work, and you have so many lots.
Right.
And I understand that. But also understand, because as I stated before, I live in the county, but there were some lots developed adjacent to me, and I'm currently going to have to probably pursue some action, because they have put the well probably less than 10 feet from my property line, or from the property line, which then limits me if I decide to build on my lot that I bought to protect myself. Where do I put my well and my septic? Because now they've encroached on that 10-foot setback. And even then, I'm sure you know this as well, a well from a septic tank, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is 100 feet.
Fifty.
Is it 50?
No, it's 100. I talked to the Health Department.
I should say, when I built my residence, I had to have a minimum of 100 feet on a well and a septic. And that was five years ago. So, because I went through all the building, and went through all the permitting and everything, and the Health Department to get my well and my septic tank. So it was 100 feet at the time. If it's 50 today, then that's changed since five years ago, since 2019.
No, I talked to them last week.
It's 100.
So that's where my concern is with the one acre lot.
Sure.
Is, if you have side-by-side two one acre lots, again, they have to be a certain distance from the residence, and then a certain distance from each other, and a certain distance from the property line, as I witnessed on the property adjacent to mine, that is a difficult challenge to accomplish that. And then the what-if factor, as I stated before, what if something happens to that well, or what if something happens to that septic? A current worker of mine now, he's got a drain problem, won't perk anymore, so he's constantly having to pump his septic tank. If you're on a one acre lot, if you have a drain problem, you don't have anywhere to reroute a drain line or septic tank, because you're limited to all those factors, 100 feet from the well, 10 feet from the property line. So that's my concern for the one acre lot.
Sure.
And that's why I was hoping that y'all had, you know, would have reflected on that and decided, you know what, maybe it'd come back and said, well, our minimum lot size is two acres or something. So that's where I'm at with one acre lot.
So not only is it a 100-foot separation, the code requires a replacement field on the same lot in cashier's fails. So if you start adding it up, you've got to have two septic fields, you've got to have the separation with the well. That's, that's, all of this plays into that discussion. That's why I asked.
And also the separation from the neighbor's way.
Right, yeah.
So you've got other factors that play into this, the one acre size, that I don't think you're going to squeeze by us.
Well, if you take the, if you take the well equation out of it, then what does that do?
I don't think, from my standpoint personally, I'm at two acres or above.
Can you help me understand why you have that position?
That's what the current zoning is. AR zoning, two acres. When we're looking, we're looking to expand that, prior with the, the plan we were looking at before would have been 10 acres. Or 12, excuse me, it would have been 12. It would have been 12 before the moratorium.
So if I'm, if I'm asking, if I'm hearing you correctly, the, bringing the water out from the county doesn't, maybe doesn't solve the density issue that we need by bringing the water out? Because if you eliminate the wells, right?
You eliminate the wells, you still have the septic.
And you can't, you can't put septics in without the primary and the secondary, it has to be in, right?
Yes.
So if it can fit on that lot, and it's safe, it can, and people do it legally, and then there's sometimes you may have to go, well, that's not going to perk very well there, so we got to double up two lots, right? So it feels to me like, you know, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. I felt that coming in here, that if we could bring the county water out, that would solve a lot of issues. Would certainly make the discussion easier, would it?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, either lot size has got to increase, which I would like to see it increase regardless, some, whatever it can be, because, you know, I have, you know, just, I've seen it, Murphy's Law.
Well, and also.
And with, if you did county water, that helps your cause for your portion to be the one acre. Or if you did the community well, that's opportunity. I mean, I'm not against community well, because most of you know that, what is it? I lived in Grayson Hill subdivision. That was a community well, that was, that provided for Grayson Hill. What was the builder out there? I don't remember.
Sonny Hammond.
Sonny Hammond. You know, and you bought your water from Sonny Hammond? I think now, does Mr. Anthony South own that water well now?
Yes.
And he provides, so that's a community well.
Well, the well, like Steve brought up, the well system does create a little bit of problems for the fire suppression.
Can be overcome.
It can be overcome, but it's expensive.
And he's not going to build that building without the state fire marshal approving his plans without that.
Right, but we're just stating that there is a lot of cost involved with going with a private well system and sprinkler system. So that's just something we're throwing, throwing to you to let you explore that possibility.
Right. I think you have to run down that road, explore all those things, put costs to it, talk to the Health Department, and then have a real discussion, because.
A lot of this and that stuff's going to cost y'all money, upright at the time that we're asking for. You know, while we're right not to find this information out.
I'm good at this point.
Okay, next, we'll move to the people that might want to speak against this. I don't know if any of your questions may have been asked throughout any of this, but I'll go through the list of the people that wanted to speak against, which was Janice Bowles.
Janice Bowles, 253 Roland Road, approximately one mile from the property. I am surprised, is another word maybe I should use, that someone would happen upon property that they decide to buy that is on a FEMA Zone A flood plain, straight through the middle of it, and plan to build 124 homes and wells on it. I have particularly, I know that they have tried to have the trails and things like that in the zone area, which if it's water, you're not going to walk there. But I particularly noticed in lot 50, appears to be in portion of the Zone A that it would be submerged. This is a good way to describe it. And a Zone A, FEMA Zone A, is a 100-year flood plain with a 26% chance of flood over the life of a 30-year mortgage. So you have those homes that have a 26% chance of being in an environment that will be flooded. I would say that the average size of the subdivision in the United States is 45 homes. We're looking at almost three times the density there of what an average subdivision is. And certainly, I don't know of a larger subdivision in Upson County. So this is huge subdivision, and should have extra caution when it comes to making these decisions like you're talking about with well and sewage. I am concerned that this is spot zoning, because as we've already talked about at the last meeting, it is completely surrounded by AR. So here you pick this one spot to make into a different zoning, to accommodate 124 homes. And as Audra recommended, there are going to be, going to be a lot of canoeing and dishing, but we're talking about the residents of that community, not our community, that 124-home community, because it is restricted to other individuals. My request is that when we get to the point, if we get to the point, that the commissioners recommend some financial security. And I'm talking about a subdivision bond from the developer. It's something that a lot of cities do, and I recommend highly that you investigate the possibility of requiring one here. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I had Keegan Cathy Standard, but we scratched out. Do y'all want to speak?
I'll get her to speak.
Okay, thank you.
I don't.
Please step, okay, you have to step up to the front. Excuse me, step up to the front. State your name and address.
It's Cathy Standard, 75 Covey Roseland.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
I don't think anyone's against this proposal, something.
I'm sorry.
So much as it's, is the amount of acreage involved.
Actually, we're going to move y'all in case you step back to the corner, there's a microphone above your head right there.
They're running.
I'm sorry, I realized it's a microphone.
We're going to move you all over the place, but it's fine, it's okay.
But actually, I have scratched my name, because I didn't realize I had signed the roll.
Oh, you're fine. I just didn't want to run over you, and I didn't want to catch you out if you wanted to, yeah.
It is, it has really gotten us kind of upset, or him especially, moved up there many years ago, wanting privacy and all this stuff. And we even know from just having so many, so much time out there, and cows and horses, our cows get away sometimes. Our neighbors call, hey, your cow's over here. And I'm sure it's going to happen and go up to their subdivision too. And, you know, everybody's just neighborly, hey, and I'm bringing him back over, you know? And I could, I just see, I don't see people of that caliber, so to speak, caring for stuff like that. It really seems out of place in an agricultural area. And matter of fact, our neighbors are fixing to bring in a, matter of fact, they're doing fixing now, bringing in a huge amount of goats. And they're just like, songs throw away. So that's the only thing I was gonna really say, is the acreage and the livestock. And so there's some nasty smells out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jessica Meyer.
Ms. Meyer, could you come up here, please?
And state your name and address.
Jessica Meyer, 75 Double Bridge Road. In the last meeting, and I know we talked about it already today, we talked about the retail options there, and that how if it wasn't open to the public, it can't be retail. I don't think they've addressed that. They're still calling it, even in their response to you guys, it was two 2,500 square foot retail locations that they very plainly put are for the subdivision residents only, not for anybody else. So I'm assuming that's why they want the PM. We need to address the flood map out there. I know Janice just talked about it. I have evidence over the last few years, because our property touches their property, that lake is actually, if you look at that flood plain map that's on FEMA, it goes straight through the middle of it, because that lake is an unpermitted, non-engineered, non-inspected dam.
Not true.
Excuse me, y'all get the opportunity to reply when they get through. We'll give you all the opportunity.
We've called the alphabet soup of everybody, and nobody has any record of that lake ever existing. I would suggest strongly that you do a new current flood plain map out there, and look at Lots 50, 49 specifically. You cannot build on that, because that is completely flooded most of the year, because it actually, their lake floods my property. So if you go through and update all that, you would see that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, there's Shawna, this on her doesn't list for or against, did you wanna speak? And your name, state your name, please, and your address.
Janice Barton Nielsen, and I'm at 4210 Old Alabama.
No, you for or against, because it wasn't on?
Oh, I'm against.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, I'm a half a mile from the property. So, you know, I had all these notes when I came here today, and I've spent a good amount of time listening and taking notes that everyone has said, and, you know, I, everybody.
I have a task, please.
Everyone has a story. I turned them and I remembered. Everyone here has a story, you know, good and bad. We all have concerns. Gosh, you know, public safety, infrastructure, water, the compatibility with our, you know, surrounding lands. But I think, for me, I think, you know, other questions, I mean, I think we've talked through that, and I do very much appreciate your diligence and wanting to do this right. Of course, I would hope that we wouldn't do this.
Thank you.
So, stories. I relocated to Georgia about six years ago from Minnesota. And when I moved here, I moved into a gated community in Villarica, if anyone is familiar. I was there for less than two years when I made the decision to move to Thomaston. I think we were referred to as Barney Fife, and maybe that's why I moved here. So I moved here, and I've been here for about four years now, so I'm an outsider of this town. Observations that I have is I feel like we have a conflict or we're confused about our identity. And when I say that, I say on one side of town, we wanna build a recycling facility that people are against, and all of the, you know, conversation that goes with that. And on the other side of town, we wanna build this gated community that does not fit in with the community that we have today. You know, and so I think I'm confused about who we are in Thomaston. From a business perspective, and that's kind of where I've changed my thoughts tonight, right? I really look at the risk. So thinking from a, who is the target market for this community, right? If I'm gonna buy a house for a million and a half dollars, I want more than one acres on my lot. I want more options than seven styles of homes that you're going to build for me. I wanna pick my own builder. From a community perspective, right? In my town or in my community, and it's one of the hardest things I have today, is I don't have places to shop. I would like to shop locally. I do shop at Walmart, I do shop at Ingalls. But outside of that, there are no fine dining establishments. There's not culture, right, I mean, culture, right, meaning arts. And the things that someone buying a million and a half dollar home is gonna want within their life and be able to provide for their kids outside of nature, which is amazing here. So I think of it as risk from the perspective of, okay, we're gonna contribute, you know, one and a half million dollars to bring water out there. On a side note, I always hear about the water there, but I don't hear about the water for our homes that are surrounding it and the risk to me. But we're gonna invest 100, you know, 1.5 million dollars into running water out there as a county. But how do we know those homes are gonna sell to that market that we're trying to target with these one and a half billion dollar homes? We know that the people that are gonna buy these homes, for the most part, are probably not coming from Thomaston. Maybe, maybe a few, but I don't think most people can afford that. So, you know, in regard to the retail, that was my other thought, is 124 houses will not support a retail establishment, right, a deli, coffee shop, a restaurant, not gonna support it. So that's, I mean, again, my mind's changed, and I feel for everyone in this room, but this was where I chose to live, and I chose to live here for a reason. And I, you know, I don't wanna move again.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, I'm done. I don't wanna move again. So, Mayberry doesn't have a gated community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Pat Jones. Find a spot there.
Mary Pat Jones, 39 Fork Drive. I would like to speak as a taxpayer. The water, you know, bringing the county water in, et cetera, okay? They wanna split it or, you know, have the county participate, that's my money. That's my county dollars. As far as the roads, I don't know how many years it takes to build 124 houses. Sounds like they can do them fast in the Philippines, but I don't think it's that fast here. But all the construction traffic on Old Alabama and definitely Roland Road, because they're gonna cut through Roland Road, they just are. Those roads are already horrible, y'all know I run and I like y'all there, and the roads are bad. And the potholes are bad, and they're always fixing them, et cetera. So, you know, he kept talking about if the math doesn't work, and I get that. So let's say you change it to PR, which I hope you don't, but, you know, the math doesn't work, then it falls apart, and as you well know, then what happens? That concerns me. Again, we have cows and goats, and they run around, and thank God for our neighbors, they're like, okay, I got them, I'll help you, let's round them up. I lived in Naples, Florida for 10 years, very, very wealthy community. I do not see people in a million dollar houses liking septic and well problems. They're not gonna like that. And they're not gonna like bad roads either. The other thing is, as far as the deli and, you know, I'm with the girl that just said, there's no good places to eat for me, okay? I'm more snobby with what I eat, but, you know, a deli and a coffee shop would be wonderful, but I would like to go there. I, you know, let's do it at Spruell Bluff where everybody can enjoy it. It's already PR, or, you know, something where everybody can enjoy it, because you're right, 124 people can't support an establishment like that on the same day. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, that's everybody that I have signed up to speak. Now, would y'all like to reply to any of the things that have been brought up?
So regarding the dam, I have all of the paperwork from when the dam was engineered and constructed, every bit of the permitting for the dam. It's a category two or class two dam. It was constructed to create a irrigation pond for the horse pasture. That is what you would enter, where all of you entered the day we did the site tour. That was, it was permitted through the USDA out of Barnesville, and I have all of the paperwork from the previous owner, including all of the drawings for the construction of the dam. And regarding Ms. Meyer's statement about our lake flooding her pond, last February 2024, we had a huge rain here in Thomaston. The dam was constructed with a spillway, so that in the event there were tremendous rains, the spillway would take whatever the pipes for the dam could not handle. It has a main pipe and two siphon pipes. Last February, the spillway functioned exactly as it was created to function. There was no flooding south of the dam through Reeves Creek to where it exits our property. However, at that time, Ms. Meyer's pond overflowed the side of her pond into our property and overflowed the service road that was put in there by the previous owner. So it is not our lake that floods her property. It's her pond that, in a rain event such as that, overflowed its banks, and I witnessed it myself. So I just wanted to correct that statement. Thank you.
Okay. Any other rebuttal to any comments that was made in the opposition? Just please, the comments amongst, just hold off on those, please.
To be clear on something, the retail, as we kind of put it under that category, is really just amenities for our residents. And so we're just being transparent, and that's why it's in there. There's, we don't have any false beliefs that 124 homes is gonna support a restaurant. That's why it's not open to the public, because we don't wanna put that person in that position where they'd have to go outside of it. Now we gotta police everything that's going on, coming in and out. If someone wants to go on our trails, if they wanna have a soda or at the juice bar or something like that, they make friends with somebody that's in our subdivision, we happily have you. I mean, that's what, that's what neighbors are all about. So I wanna clarify that, that we're not, we're not in the restaurant business, but because it's a PM, we wanna be transparent, so that's why it's in there. You could, you could just as easily just put under their amenities, because that's what it is. We want our residents, if they, if one of their kids is getting married and they wanna have a get together in the clubhouse, they have the ability to do that. And if a caterer wants to come in, we're not, we're not crossing any lines here. So I wanna make that very clear. And in terms of marketing, I know a lot of people, I've worked for a lot of people that would love to live in a, in a place like that. And there's people who wanna live in Naples, and there's people that wanna live in New York. You only need 124 people that wanna live here. And you got 6 million people in Atlanta that wanna get out of there on some level. And so everybody in life goes through different seasons, and we have to at least acknowledge that, that this is about families, this is about grandparents, this is about a better way of life. And there's absolutely nothing wrong with raising your standard. It's raising the standards, it's having a vision. So again, we definitely wanna work with this committee. I respect all of you and what you do for a living, and that you're spending your time doing this with us. But again, we're still learning the process of who has the authority when it comes to the whole water issue, quite frankly, if I'm being very transparent with you. And I keep some of those conversations to ourselves, because those are private conversations. I think that's the right thing to do in this particular application, because we're not down that road yet. Is that fair? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, and now we're tasked with, do we wanna close this or continue it until we get more information?
I definitely want more information.
Okay.
I wanna speak on a couple of statements that were made by the community. Just so we can educate everyone, when we discuss flood zones or we discuss fire, you know, fire suppression systems, all that stuff is not governed by us or by our county. That's governed by the state or the federal government. The flood zone, if they choose to build Lot 50 and it sits in a flood zone, what that simply states is, they can't build a structure within a certain limits of that zone. They can modify that zone if they wanna go through what they call a FEMA flood map modification, which they can create what they call a no rise, which means if they take dirt from here and fill it in here, they have to balance that, it's called a no rise. So just so we all know, the government, the state of Georgia, nor the federal government, is going to allow them to build a structure within that flood zone. Because I know for certain that whatever their current hydrology is on their property today, it can't change tomorrow. So if they wanna build 124 homes and put in roads, their hydrology, Ms. Meyer's, on your property, if you adjoin them, they can't discharge any more water on your property tomorrow than they can today. And that's gonna be governed by the government. I think they have a civil engineer that came up and spoke tonight. That is his responsibility to make sure that happens. As far as the fire suppression system, I'm familiar with that as well, when it's on a well. We have a representative from North Beach Church here tonight. They had to go through something similar. It's just, it's gonna, there is something they will have to do if they're on a well system. As a fire suppression system, they'll have to have a reserve tank to provide that. I think our representative from my local fire department would tell you that as well. Concerns that I hear is that we're worried about flood, we're worried about fire, we're worried about amenities. You know, I've lived here my whole life, and as I told y'all before, some of y'all built on property and I didn't like it. This is, I see this as an opportunity for my, I have three kids. And not all three of my kids may wanna buy a large tract of land to build on. Not all three of them may wanna live on O Street. They may would like to live in a neighborhood like this. There's not another neighborhood, unless you wanna live in Fair Oaks, that we have an opportunity that has been brought to us that is of such significance and such prominence. We've had opportunities come in here, and let's face it, if we wanna, we wanna build a government housing apartments, we've had that come before us, maybe not in the county, but in the city. This is an opportunity to have the rights to have some discussions with this developer to make this be something really nice. Things that I wanted to just speak on is the flood zone. You know, I'm sure if this is allowed through the county, there will be a bond requirement, I would assume. I'm speaking on behalf of county commissioners, that's gonna be required when they initially do the roads and utilities. They're probably, if I sit on that board, I'm gonna require them to have a performance bond. And what that means is, whatever the dollar amount for the roads to be put in, the utilities put in, they're gonna bond or insure over that to make sure they do it according to the approved plans. If they don't meet their obligation, then the county can go against that bond to finish it on behalf of the developer. So that's a surety for us that that happens. We don't just leave an undeveloped subdivision. I've worked all across the state of Georgia in painting houses. As most of y'all know, I have a painting business. I've painted from Macon, Columbus, Newnan. I've watched these very subdivisions go in and be very successful. Things that I thought, man, there's no way they'll sell these houses. They sell them. I didn't, you know, I don't like it they built next door to me. The price range they're gonna sell those homes at is ranging from 400 to half a million on the lots they have. And they're not as nice a homes as what this is being offered, nor are they of the size. The lots of the houses there are 1,500 square feet. They're gonna sell. Look what happened on Hannes Mill Road. Those houses sold soon as they were built. So I think we should all look at it to say, you know, and I hate to say it, but we all had an opportunity to buy this property and we didn't. They did, and they wanna do something with it. And I think if we look at this and make this an opportunity, I think the county water's a great thing to have. It will give opportunity for those of you that are out there, if you wanna join on it, you can. Believe me, when the power goes out, I don't have any water. When I lived in the city, I had water constantly. So that's a big thing. So that's what I have to say about that.
I would add to that. I sat on the Development Authority Board for six years here in Thomaston, Upton. We had lots of opportunity, different industries wanna come to town. There were some barriers for them deciding to locate here. Housing was one of them. Nice communities for their executives and their people to live in. Restaurants were another one. We worked hard, and not having a hotel was another one. We worked hard to get some of those things. It's a cycle, and we have to start somewhere if we wanna improve this community and have those things that everybody's talking about. So all I can say is, it starts somewhere, and we need to give that some consideration.
I'd like to say too, keep in mind, everybody, we're subject to growth, okay? It's gonna happen whether we want it to or not. As Bowler mentioned, if you don't want growth, go buy the property all around, you stop it from happening. But most of us can't do that. So what we can do as a commission up here is sit back and look and say, okay, we listen to y'all and what your suggestions are and what you like and what you don't. And we're trying to direct that growth in a way that's sustainable for all of us. What they had brought up is an upgrade to the zoning that they currently have. So be open minded, listen to what they're offering, and understand that we're working hard to make sure we try to protect y'all in the. hard to make sure we try to protect you all in the decisions that we make on both sides. Thank you all. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Have a motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number four. Anybody who wants to leave, now would be your time to move it on to other business. If you'd like to leave at the moment, you're welcome to stay. But if you'd like to leave, please step outside.
Ben Berrythill. You would ask the name of the individual.
Thank you.
Next year.
Maybe later.
Yeah, after you.
How long?
I mean, it ran out of 15 minutes on what we're working on here.
I didn't have time to answer questions.
Okay, we've closed the hearing. You have to catch us another time. Yeah, you know what, you're welcome. Please do.
He'll be there tomorrow, I'm sure.
I appreciate you.
I appreciate you.
Appreciate you guys.
Okay, we're going to move on to the new business, which is Planning Commission Rules and Procedures Amendments, Discussion of the Draft Ordinance 285 for Procedural Amendments and 25 meeting schedule discussions. Okay, on the procedural amendments, Doug, would you like to?
Absolutely. If you could get the door, please. If you remember that Commissioner Murphy at the last meeting suggested some changes, those need to be made to your rules of procedure. And for some of you, this may be the first time you're looking at the rules of procedure. You'll see in the red is where I believe that suggestions that Commissioner Murphy made would go. You'll see in the procedures, your amendments need to be discussed at one meeting and then they can be adopted at the next one. So, Mr. Chairman, this is your adopted adoption meeting if you want it to be, or if you're not satisfied or you want to talk about it, you can continue this also. This is not an open public hearing. It's nothing, this is just something, you're creating additions to your own procedure. So on page three, you'll see that it was requested that you open your meeting with a moment of silence and then a pledge of allegiance. Again, this is the section that we would amend, you know, what your agenda looks like and that's why we have the format that we do. And then I did highlight on the top of page five that you've got listed the second Monday of the month. I only did that not because you discussed change, but because we're going to discuss that later in the meeting. And so I just wanted to highlight it. It is in your rules of procedure when you meet. It's up to you to change that. You may change it. We've had this discussion with the Planning Commission the past. It's whatever you want it to be and there are circumstances that have changed. It will discuss soon that you may want to visit that portion of your rules of procedure. And further down, we get into the, under Public Hearings A. You'll see where we discuss the separate sign-up sheets. I purposely included the format that we've been using for years. It's not a separate sheet, but it does have the for and against.
Yes.
Again, if you want the two separate sheets, we can do that, or if you're happy with the format, we got it. We don't need to change it. You also discussed that you might want to change the maximum speaking time to three minutes from five, so that draft is in there. You also have in your section that was discussed that you could yield a portion of your time. Just ironically, again, the subject that we have coming up next, the Board of Commissioners has decided in the new procedures to go the opposite way and they're not going to allow you to yield. So again, this is your decision, your rules of procedure. I just wanted to note that it's interesting that the Board of Commissioners has the same issue and they're going the opposite direction. And then there also was mentioned that, as you heard, what we do at meetings anyway is where we announce the particulars of the meeting, who you're supposed to address, where you stand, the fact we're on YouTube, the fact that you sign up out here versus the attendance sheet. So all those things that we've been doing anyway, but there's no reason why we can't put those into your rules of procedure. Excellent idea. And I think that was it. So, Mr. Chairman, we can make all of those changes, none of those changes. We just ask for you to take a formal vote on them individually, or if you like them all as they are, we can take one vote. It just depends on what you prefer.
Well, one question I got on the, we're in 285 over here, when the developer or whatever had longer to talk than, you know, we had talked about in the past, was everybody had equal amount of time to talk. Well, I think this was a perfect example on Serenity Lake. Five minutes is not enough time to explain a project such as that. So I think limiting them to, you know, a developer to five minutes on a large project like that is not enough time to get their point across. So I don't think that going with the equal time both ways is adequate. I think when, you know, before we had 10 minutes for the developer, which I personally think is a better option, and if it's a larger project, we might can consider, you know, on a per-case basis, a little bit longer if they request that. The three minutes, I think, I mean.
Where does it state that they, this 10 minutes?
Right here on the, that was one of our, you should have that copy in there too. On the bottom. I think everybody was able to get their comments in within five minutes. We've been cutting people off to three minutes, I think. So I think, I think five minutes, you know, I think we're willing to respect to speak the five minutes versus three. But allow the developer a longer, you know, as much as 10. And, you know, if they request more, we can review it on a per-case basis.
Well, and you know that the rules of procedure that I guess, maybe that's what you're handing around?
Yeah.
Basically says that at your discretion. So what time you allocate to who is sort of loosey-goosey.
Okay. Like I said, in this rules of procedure, I would like to change, I don't want the three minutes. And we'll leave it five minutes full. And then, you know, I think I'd go back to the 10 for the developer or project presenter and we can adjust it if we need to.
Yeah, and like you say, case by case.
Yes.
I'm not opposed to it.
Okay.
All right, so we would create new language that will allow the applicant 10 minutes to start.
And less request, and less more time is requested, then we'll review it on a per-case basis.
Right, and I think we've got language in there that allows for that. And then we'll delete the three.
Yeah.
We're going to stick with the five?
Yes.
We're going sort of by consensus here. We take that at the end, but, okay.
Now, the second Monday, we'll come back to that in a minute when we finish the rest of them. The two separate sign-in sheets, I don't need. I'm perfectly fine with the single sign-in sheet with the for and against. That works good. I can work with that, no problem.
That consensus to stick with one, or do you want to go with two?
One sheet's fine.
Okay. Since you were the one with the idea.
Well, my idea was to make them sign up prior to the meeting starting, not let them sign up throughout the meeting.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that. I might want to open it up to, you know, I think the first time I did it, I won't do that on a normal basis. A lot of people that step in after they haven't signed up, they just time constraints.
And that's the way we've always have handled that situation.
Yeah, be there on time, sign the sheet.
All right, well, that's the last sentence in that number four. Only those signed up to speak prior to the public hearing testify during the public hearing. So we're very happy with that.
Now, the pledge and the moment of silence is fine with me.
Well, we're going to go with moment of silence, so we want to have a word of prayer.
Let's have a word of prayer.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, who are we going to get to do the prayer?
We can have a guest pastor come in or one of us can serve as that. I mean, I don't, unless somebody on this commission does not agree with that, I'm perfectly fine. If we can get a guest person to come in and say a prayer for us.
If we could get a guest person to come, let's go with that. If something happens where we can't, then one of us will step up to the plate and do it.
That's fine. I'm good with that.
All right, do we want to delete moment of silence and put?
A good prayer.
Opening prayer?
Opening prayer.
Okay.
Okay, on the second Monday, I mean, first of all, that works fine for me. I understand the commissioners are changing their schedules some and they may flip-flop this thing three or four times. We don't know where they're going to land. That's what they're doing at the moment. If, from my opinion, you know, really a day or two at a time for us to them is not enough time for them to explore it. So this gives them a little bit more time to explore their options.
Mr. Chairman, if I may explain how this all works. We have state mandates in terms of advertising, that's why those yellow signs show up, and also the newspaper ad. So currently, from the time you take action, and you've got the graphic in there that I can look to. There we go. All right, so this is basically where you are now. The one, it shows that currently you are on the second Monday and then you go to the second Tuesday of the following month. And the reason is, is by state law, we have to advertise in the Beacon at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. The Beacon only publishes once. The Board of Commissioners, well, had two meetings. So we have to coordinate the advertising and the signage 15 days to 45 days prior to. And so, for instance, there's a Board of Commissioners meeting tomorrow. If you had passed something out, no, we can't take that to tomorrow because we have to advertise for 15 days minimum. The signs got, and then it takes, you've got to get the ad in a couple of days early. So there's time there. So it has worked out for the 12 years I've been here where, where as you'll see, this is closer if you had moved. It actually, while this is the change, it reflects the time where you see your meeting, whatever, January 23rd, you had your meeting, you adopted whatever it was. Four weeks later, it goes to the Board of Commissioners because the advertising, the fact it's Beacon, publishes once, it's all that works for, not the next day, can't work it because we've got to advertise for 15 days. And that doesn't even allow us for the first meeting of the next month. Well, it allows for that meeting. So we've got to get those days in. So right now, you have four weeks, but if you took final action tonight on Serenity Lake, we would, four weeks from now, go to the Board of Commissioners, which means they skip a meeting and it would be the meeting out. Now with their change, you're at six weeks. Now you'll recall that, and some of you know this better than others, there was a recent change where if you want to live in an RV during construction of your home, that's a special exception, that used to go to the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. In the interest of shortening that, because it was always approved with the same conditions identically, they cut the Planning Commission out and said, well, to speed it up, we're going to allow you just to come to us. Well, that reduces it by, I don't know, two weeks, four weeks, whatever. So here, we're actually going the opposite, is if you had finished tonight and they'd already made their change, that Serenity Lake won't go for six weeks. So you just have to make a decision. It's an inconvenience to the citizens that, well, for instance, Mr. Patterson, he's waiting six weeks because we didn't know that this meeting, we were told that that meeting tomorrow wasn't going to happen. So it is happening, but we were told it wasn't. So Mr. Patterson's final Board of Commissioners hearing isn't until six weeks later. I posted that sign this weekend because I had to have it done by today and it's good that I did it Saturday. So he's waiting six weeks. Again, it's your decision, the Board of Commissioners tomorrow night will make their decision. It's not a sort of, we want to, we might, it's informal. They're adopting an ordinance, you have a copy of it in your packet for that six weeks. There's no requirement that you make this change. I just wanted to bring it to light that now somebody gets a final decision from you, whether your recommendation is for or against or no recommendation, they have to wait, you know, with this change, we presume will be adopted tomorrow, they have to wait six weeks for their decision instead of the four weeks that's been before. So if you move your meeting, you could actually get us back into the cycle we were. Again, if you go to the fourth Monday, that's the cycle we're sort of, you're in basically the same cycle one day before the Board of Commissioners. Again, not a requirement, it's up to three out of five of you to decide whether you're going to change or not change.
I like our current schedule, personally.
I don't personally care what our schedule is. I'm signed up to be here, I'm going to be here whenever it is. Unfortunately, our county commissioners may make the decision to go to once a month if that's what they're doing. I'm fine with our current schedule, leaving it as is, which unfortunately pushes out six weeks before Mr. Patterson or whoever.
Well, that would be a decision the commissioners are making, not us.
Right, that's right. And that's on them. So I'm okay with our current schedule. It's been this way. Jeff served on this board.
Okay, we have a motion to keep the schedule as it is.
I'll make a motion to keep the schedule as it is.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, that was on one part of it. Now what about all the other changes?
Okay, all the other changes on the, what we've covered on the.
Right, in my notes now, I'll have to do a little bit of wordsmithing.
Rules of procedure.
We've got open prayer for the one page. We want to take the developer to 10 minutes or the applicant to 10 minutes and we're going to leave the speakers at five minutes. So I need a wordsmith that for you all, but if you want to pass that, I'll get you the pretty words at your next meeting. If you want to approve all those minor changes with the other languages in there.
Do we have a motion to approve the changes as stated?
So we make, so I'm clear, Jacqueline, you're making a motion to approve that we're going to give the developer or the applicant 10 minutes to speak. And everyone else, whether it's in opposition or for, gets five minutes each to speak. Is that your motion?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
With this exception of, it could be a case by case.
Where a large project may require more from the developer, not necessarily from individuals.
Okay, let me ask a question on that. Do they need to let Doug know, it's like I'm going to.
Yes, we need to know that prior. Yes, we need to know that prior to the meeting.
Well, and this is the current language. The chair or the commission by majority vote may extend the allotted speaking time. So number one, you as the chair have the power by yourself to say, I'll give you five more minutes. Or majority vote of the board, if you're not agreeable to that, three out of the five, say give them more time. So that's already in your bylaw.
Okay, so we just, we just need to make the motion for the 10 minutes and five minutes.
And all the other changes, right? I'm giving you the red.
Prayer and pledge.
So, Mr. Doug, I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
In my procedures that I've gone to, that I've been the applicant, this is not really for me or for this board, to me, and I'm not challenging what, how the system has been run, it would be more informative, you do a great job of putting together these presentations, putting together what the zoning request is, the facts, the exhibits. What's the thought that you were the presenter first? Staff presents to lead this discussion first. That way it kind of educates the people that is here. And then the applicant stands up after you've completed, the applicant stands up and presents and then the, in favor of the applicant and then following that would be opposition. And then at that time, we'll close public hearing. We have opportunity to ask questions at that time. And then also the applicant will be given opportunity to do a rebuttal, to answer our questions or to rebuttal any information that was given by someone in opposition. What's the thoughts on that from you?
All right, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this is. Right, there's no wrong answer. I have had these discussions, I attend the zoning administrators conference every, twice a year. The best statement I ever heard was from a city attorney, he said, I like staff to go first so they can set the table.
Prayer and pledge.
So, Mr. Doug, I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
In my procedures that I've gone to, that I've been the applicant, this is not really for me or for this board. To me, and I'm not challenging what, how the system has been run, it would be more informative, you do a great job of putting together these presentations, putting together what the zoning request is, the facts, the exhibits. What's the thought that you were the presenter first? Staff presents to lead this discussion first. That way, it kind of educates the people that is here, and then the applicant stands up after you've completed, the applicant stands up and presents, and then, in favor of the applicant, and then following that would be opposition, and then, at that time, we'll close public hearing. We have opportunity to ask questions at that time. And then, also, the applicant will be given opportunity to do a rebuttal, to answer our questions, or to rebuttal any information that was given by someone in opposition. What's the thoughts on that from you?
All right, Mr. Chairman. Right, there's no wrong answer. I have had these discussions, I attend the zoning administrators conference every, twice a year. The best statement I ever heard was from a city attorney, he said, I like staff to go first so they can set the table. And so, that's the best argument I've heard for staff to go first. It doesn't matter to me, I've got the same report, whether I look before everybody else. Then the question was, well, do I do it as part of the public hearing or separate from the public hearing? There's no wrong answer to that. It's whatever you prefer as the board. So, we can put in the bylaws that, you know, staff will make their presentation as part of the public hearing first, or outside the public hearing first, or go left, whatever you prefer, right? It doesn't matter.
I'm just, I'm just opening that up for discussion.
I think that like you do in the Board of Commissioners, it kind of sets the table, like Marty said, like if you give your recommendations before-
Or you give the facts.
Yeah.
Here's the code. Here's what the current applicant is allowed, here's what they're asking for, and here's staff's recommendation as far as we either in support or against this zoning request. And then, you're not biased, I mean, you're giving a recommendation, but you've stated the facts. And I think a lot of times, when this, when groups of people, when people come in here, a lot of times, they're uneducated on the facts. Because I have served as, in a position where I've been the applicant, and just as tonight, they come in and want to, you know, it's a lot of social talk. People don't do the research themselves to find out about the facts. So, I just think that kind of sets the tone. You've always done a good job at presenting the facts and the exhibits, and this is what we have. It'll clarify a lot of things before the public hearing gets opened up. That's why I, I think it would be a good idea, but I'm open to how you feel about it, Guadalupe feels about it, and then this board feels about it.
Well, do you want that part of the bylaws, and we can work that in, or do you just want to make it procedure, and then my part of the public hearing to start it off, or am I separate from the public hearing?
Typically, it's been separate. Staff makes a presentation, now we're going to open up public hearing, and we, is anyone from the applicant here tonight to speak about this as a, in favor of, is the applicant here, and then following that, is anyone in favor, then following that, is anyone against?
The ramifications, and I know sometimes we talk about there not being debate, but within public hearings and what we do, technically, there's cross-examination allowed by state law.
It is.
So, we've never had that, but, and we would want it structured, we just don't have people arguing, but, that would, you know, if you want me to be part of that potential cross-examination, then I should be part of the public hearing. If you don't care, or you don't want me as part of the potential cross-examination, then I can be separate from the public hearing. And again, I don't think there's any wrong answer.
In that fact, I think, from what I understand, in order for you to be part, because you would definitely need to be part of the cross-examination, because we would look at you to answer some of the questions that we may not have in-depth knowledge of that you do. So, we would need your staff's support in that cross-examination. For instance, if the applicant asked for something or made a statement, we could say, Mr. Curry or Ms. Doug, what is the, what is our stance on that with the county? What is our code state? You know, and that's, I think that would be, I think that answers that question.
All right, well, then I could be the first speaker during the public hearing, if that's what you mean.
Yes, sir. Did I hear you correctly saying in order to be part of cross-examination, you need-
Well, that also means that the public can cross-examine me. In other words, Mr. Curry, you said such and such, I'm challenging that, and it doesn't matter to me, I hope I've got my facts straight and I understand the answers. Just again, and like I said, we do discuss that when I go to zoning administrators and this comes up, and there is no golden answer. There's no, it's, everybody does it different, they have their own style. Like I said, one attorney gave me the best answer, staff first to set the table, which is sort of what you're saying, what you said.
Okay.
And we can, you know, do you want that in your rules of procedure then?
I'm looking for y'all to-
First off, I think what you've laid it out, that flows in my mind, my engineering mind, that flows well, so I would be okay with that.
Yeah, put that in the rules of procedure.
No, 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 you, you're okay. Yeah, that, I think that's the direction we should go.
I'm in agreement with that.
You put it in the rules of procedure, not in the, yes.
We can do our own rules of procedure.
We can get a couple more, right? It looks like we need a little more wordsmithing for your next meeting. But, still, we can, if you want to just hold out the rest of the votes until your next meeting, we can do that.
Okay.
I mean, you're going to see these next year anyway, because that's your, by rules of procedure, you review your rules of procedure every even year, so you're ahead of the game. We'll bring this back next meeting with more wordsmithing to get everything.
So, do we want to table approving this at this moment?
A motion to continue the-
Let's get you your final language.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
Table, or to continue this rules of procedure.
Yeah, to continue the rules of procedure till Doug can get us the, get him writing, get us the final draft.
I'll make a motion.
Approving the final.
Make a motion to table the rules of procedure, and to allow Doug to give us a final draft of our rules of procedure.
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous?
Unanimous. All right, item number five, other business, which is review of SPX 202501, conditions of approval language on the Patterson.
Right, this was wordsmithing, just as we've just addressed, Mr. Chairman. So, if you are satisfied with that paragraph in red, that's the language that I look forward. Again, because of the new timeframes that we've got, I have not issued the staff report to the Board of Commissioners yet, I've got a couple of weeks before I have to. But you had proposed that additional language, and if that's wordsmith appropriately, then we can go with that as the conditions that are in the Patterson staff report, reporting your conditions. Number five, does everybody have that copy? If not, I can, if there's not a package. It's just number five in red, that was the only language that we had to wordsmith.
Okay, is that acceptable to?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I have no question.
All right, we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
The conditions for the Patterson as we have presented to us.
Second. All in favor?
Unanimous?
Yes. Okay, item number six, any planning commission issues or announcements?
I'd like to make an, or just announcement. I appreciate the opportunity to come and serve on this board. Appreciate everyone's time they put into it. I saw your emails with the comment or the questions to ask to the applicant for the development we saw here tonight. Again, I'll say to Doug and Guadalupe, thank you for what you put together. Sometimes, what we do here is not favorable with everyone, but I just want everybody to know that when I do come to this meeting, and I think I speak for all of us, we come to it with the county and the public's greatest intent or greatest well-being that we can. It's not always the favorable, but what I'll say is typically, when something is brought before the county, everybody's not going to be happy. And to serve in this position, you have to be willing to take the compliments and the the non-believers in what we have done or what we have to do. Sometimes, whether we approve the item or deny it, it's not always favorable. And so, to those of us that are new here, I would like to welcome Ms. Jacqueline, Louis, this was her first night, we didn't officially welcome her, I want to welcome Ms. Jacqueline tonight.
Kind of to her to the heat, right up at front.
You'll find out that we're not always, people are not always happy with us, but in the end, they will get over, because we're doing what we feel like is the right thing for this community. So, that's what I have to say.
As chairman, I'd like to sit a little bit more in our communication amongst us. I know we can't, you know, we've got four of them to deal with, so we can't sit down and talk as groups, but intercommunication is very important to, especially in a situation like we're working here with Serenity. There's a lot of questions that need to be brought about, and some you may have, maybe the same as what I've got, some you, y'all may have that I don't think about. So, these types of things need to be brought forward as soon as possible so that we can mull these things over and maybe speed up the process in a lot of cases. So, you know, intercommunication is something that I definitely want to change from what I was dealt with the last year I've been here, so.
And Mr. Chairman, certainly the staff, and Mr. Hilton, as the senior member, has participated in workshops. So, if there's any point where you want to have an hour or two meeting, just to sit down, and again, just to educate you, the public may attend those, they may not speak, unless you allow them to, and we would have to advertise, you only have to advertise a day or two in advance, notice the media, but, you know, we've done it in very formal ways. I think there was an animal ordinance that we worked on, I think we had at least two, if not three, workshops, so.
All day.
We, staff will absolutely support you if you want a workshop, after hours, during hours, whatever you want. If there's an issue like this or another one that you feel you need more time to concentrate as a group together to discuss it-
Yes.
-without interference by public hearing. And staff will keep their mouth shut unless you ask us something, we'll just sit there and let you discuss it. So, again, we've got one member here who has participated in these workshops before. If that idea is foreign to you, then I'm glad we introduced it here, we're certainly open to that if you ever feel it's necessary.
I think when we've got a case, I think that's, I think that's what we should look at.
Especially with this magnitude.
Right, we should probably try to entertain the idea of a workshop where we sit here and we discuss it, and it is discussed publicly, there's just not opportunity for public comments unless we choose so. That way, we're very transparent.
I would like to say thank you to Doug and Guadalupe for working with me, and of course, I know all of you personally, so it's, and the Board of Commissioners for the appointment, it's been great. The one thing I would like, and I'm sure Doug and Guadalupe want to give that to me, I'd love to have everyone's emails and phone numbers, so like if I want to send a message or something to you, then I have those. Because I'm not on group, I'm not a big group texter, did not even dream that up. But I do like communication, I like all the i's dotted and the t's crossed for meetings like this where you, where you don't get blindsided by anything. But I do like the recommendation from, from Phil, Chairman Fallon, excuse me, that, you know, on the workshops, that way it also gives whoever is, you know, coming forward, it also gives them the opportunity to get all their material together. If it is a workshop, they can't talk about it, but they don't, they don't come to us and not have the answers to the questions in which we need, so.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, secretaries, issues and announcements?
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, like a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
I'll go.
Mr. Kill the camera.
7:32.